I had it figured out before that.
Oh, it's five o'clock. Okay. Like to call order the Monday, May 5th, City Council meeting with the record of attendance. Rhonda, please.
Baker.
Here.
Drake.
Here.
Lindsay.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Kow.
Here.
Turnbow.
Here.
and where.
Here.
We'll start off with the opening prayer by with Tom Robinson and the Pledge of Allegiance for Lawrence or where.
Dear Lord, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to care for the world you have made. We ask that your blessing would rest on this council, that you would give us great vision and enthusiasm for our work. Please bless the efforts of our hands, the bonds between us, and the influence of our work in this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First item that we're going to take care of is going to be the swearing in of David Tejau to the mayor of Kim. Mr. Tejau, would you please take the positions?
Hi, David Tejau. Being the first to this morning. State is from Ohio. I was held at qualifications. Right. Describedly informed as mayor of Tim. That I will support the constitution of the United States of America. Decisions of all laws of the state. Or institutions. They believe me and myself in office. That's a five.
Congratulations, Mr. Tejau.
Congratulations, sir.
Yeah. The first item is approval of City Council minutes, the regular City Council minutes of March 31st, April 7th, and April 25th of 2025. Are there any changes or questions or comments? Seeing none, the chair would accept the motion to approve.
Make a motion. We approve the council for the 31st of March, April 7th, and April 25th.
I'll second. Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The next item is the second reading in consideration of Bill 6376, rezone of four properties on 5th Street from single-family R2 to highway commercial C3. The chair would accept the motion for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading, Tabitha, please.
Bill number 6376, as approved, shall become ordinance number 6376, providing for the rezoning from single-family R2 to highway commercial C3, the following described real estate to it, 108, 110, 112, and 114 5th Street, containing two acres more or less, located in Scott County, Missouri, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Sykes, Missouri, as follows. This bill includes sections 1 through 7, and it is read this second time and discussed on the 5th day of May 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, council. We're asking for the second approval, or for the final approval of the rezoning of these properties. They will go from R2 to family, or sorry, highway commercial C3. There was approval done at the board meeting of the Plan and Zoning Commission on April 9th. That was favorable. There was one request from a citizen that showed their interest in what was going on. I read the letter to the board, basically stating that they were their only concern was what would happen with the property after Mr. Bizzle relinquished in some form or fashion, but did not have an issue. They think Mr. Bizzle and his family run a fine business and are good patriots of the city of Sykes, and so just seeking your approval.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Blevins? Seeing none, the chair would accept the motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Roll call vote. Rhonda, please.
Drake.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Tejau.
Yes.
Turnbow.
Yes.
Where.
Yes.
And Baker.
Yes.
Thank you, Barry. The next item is the first reading of Bill 6374, water rate increase. The chair would accept the motion for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? First reading, Tabitha, please.
Bill number 6374, which upon adoption and passage shall become ordinance number 6374, and shall establish section 705.060, water rate schedule for the city of Sykes and Missouri. Whereas the Board of Municipal Utilities has determined that water rate increases are necessary and proper to maintain the economic viability of the municipal utility system, and whereas the rates presented will increase customer charge based on meter size effective July 2nd, 2025, and whereas the rates presented will increase customer charge based on meter sizes effective June 1st, 2026, and the rates presented will increase customer charge based on meter size effective June 1st, 2027, and June 1st, 2028. The rates presented will increase water usage charged from $4.79 per thousand gallons for the first 4 million gallons or less, and $3.68 per thousand gallons over 4 million gallons effective July 2nd through 2025. And that rate increases, and that schedule is attached to this ordinance all the way up through July 2nd, 2025, to June 1st, 2028. Now therefore, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Sykes, Missouri, as follows. This bill includes sections 1 through 5, all of their parts and subparts, and it's read this first time and introduced to council this 5th day of May 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Landers, you have the floor.
Do you want it as a slideshow or just one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay, well, let me stop then.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Back around 2018, the BMU started a process where we reviewed the infrastructure, utility infrastructure in the city of Sykes, and on the water infrastructure and the sewer, all of it really, we determined there was a lot of aging infrastructure that we needed to address, and we came up with plans that the board approved and we presented to the council for improving the water infrastructure, the sewer infrastructure, the electric. What you're seeing today is the second phase of what we started on in 2018. So regarding the water, the plan was to, we had aging infrastructure. What you see on the on the screen is basically a plant that's over 70 years old. Until recently, that wasn't our oldest plant. We built water plant number four, so we would have enough of a shored-up supply that we can start addressing these other plants. So we're now, once we got four running and ready, and it's stable, so now we start the next process that we presented previously. So what we're looking at now is working on plant number four, excuse me, plant number two. Turn this on.
You turn on on the side.
And IT challenge. Which which one works it? Oh, you're gonna scroll it? I wanna scroll through it.
Let me know when you're ready.
Go ahead and go to the next one. Anyway, that's the plant. There's some pictures of the current plant that we're proposing to rehabilitate. We recently did a review and determined the cost to rehab this plant. The cost came in pretty high. Because of that, we we did another study to see should we, if we're gonna spend that money, do we build a new plant instead of rehabbing this one? That study determined that a new plant would cost twice as much as rehabbing this plant, so we stuck with the original original plan. This is just 1950s technology. Go ahead, Rhonda. Just more of the same. Like I said, this plant is over 70 years old. What what has happened to it is we got so strapped for water that we couldn't like shut it down. You know, there was no time of the year that the city usage was low enough we could take a plant off. So these plants have been run pretty hard, and it's time to go through them. Go to the next one, Rhonda. This is some more of the same. Just some old, just an old plant. Go to the next one, please. What you have here is when I mentioned the plan, the the part in blue is the part we've already come to the council for for rates and addressed, and that's the plant four. You'll see the original plan and and what we completed with that. Now the part that's shaded, I don't know what color that is, brown or not good with that, but anyway, that's the part we're trying to address now. If you look at that, that's the overall plan. It was to do plant four. It was to upgrade or rehab plant two, and it was to eventually get to plant three, and we would be finished with our water system addressing that aging production infrastructure. So we're on part two now. You can see when we started the plan, what the estimated cost was, and now what the estimated cost is. So the proposal that was read a minute ago about the rates is intended to cover that second part, the plant two rehab, 13, just shy of $14 million worth of cost. And we tiered it out over a couple of years to lessen the the impact to the customers and citizens. Rhonda, go to the next. That's what it amounts to for an average 5,000 gallon residential household, that much a month, over the four-year term that it spread out. Go to the next one, please. That's where you come out. You start out, you can see the FYE 2024, right here. This is where this is where we are now. And then all we have is the current one, the 2024. So when you go down to the bottom, you see where we end up in 2028 as compared to current. This follows the same track as the sewer. When you look at the disparity in cost, basically what what you're seeing is there's a difference between people who've had to do something and people who haven't had to do something. And everybody's gonna end up, you may have a lower rate now, but you're gonna end up with everyone else when you eventually have to replace your plant. That's just that's just where you end up. Rhonda, can you go to the next one, please? And that's the plant two. That's back to where we started. That's, you can look at the plaque, 1952, the group that was there. That was before the current BMU structure. I think the city council members are listed on there. But that's basically, we're just following through with the original plan, and this is the next phase to start going through our water plants. So, if you have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Okay. Remember the, yes, the new policy, please.
I'm Will Watson. The question I have is, this is what, about a seven and a half percent on the water rates and 10% on the sewer?
I don't know what the percentage.
Okay. The other thing is, I think the packet showed the on the second page of this ordinance showed the rates not changing. I'm assuming that's a typo. Because it showed all the dates, but the 479 stayed the same.
There was a typo.
Okay.
Where's it at?
If you look at whereas the rates presented will increase, what are what are charged to 479 per thousand gallons?
I can show you afterwards, Rhonda, if you want. The other question I've got is, you indicated this, you're expecting all these other municipalities to hit the same point?
Whenever they have to do something, their rate will go up.
Well, I mean, that's when anybody has to do something, rates go up.
Correct.
There's no indication right now that any of those other cities, Cape and some of those others that were on the list, is contemplating anything?
I'm not aware of what they have.
Will.
I don't know how old their plants are. I just know Sykes.
If you if you watch, if you look in the news now, Cape's having issues with water, and when it comes to the summer, they they try to pass a tax bill, is that correct, to have it their water plant improved, and it didn't pass. I think that might have been the second time. I'm not sure. But anyway, it did not pass, and the city of Cape, right now, when it comes to summertime, their plant won't handle it. It's gonna hurt. So they're going to try to do something different to try to get that accomplished. And plant, you know, cities like that, if they let it go too long, like if we let these other plants go too long, then we'll be in the same boat.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Rick. The next item is the first reading of Bill 6375, Sewer Rate Increase. The chair would accept the motion for the first reading.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? First reading, Tabitha, please.
Bill number 6375, as approved, shall become ordinance number 6375, found in chapter 705, section 705.040, Sewer Rate Schedule of the City Code of the City of Sykes, Missouri. Whereas the Board of Municipal Utilities has determined that sewer rate increases are necessary and proper to maintain the economic viability of the municipal utility system, and whereas the rates presented will increase the average residential customer's monthly sewer bill to $6.40 effective on July 2nd, 2025, then to $7.03 effective June 1st, 2026, and then to $7.73 effective June 1st, 2027, and then $8.49 effective June 1st, 2028. Whereas the mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to implement the rate changes, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Sykes, Missouri, as follows. This bill includes sections 1 through 5, all of its parts and subparts, and it's read and introduced to council the first time today, the 5th day of May 2025.
Ricky, you have four again. How we're gonna do with the water?
Well, I mean, yeah, this one follows the same track as the first one. It, we did a study on how to address the aging infrastructure, and we've already started part of it. This is the next phase to address the headworks. Just, this is, this is the aerial view of the plant. This part here with the green, that's that's plant one. It was actually built in like the 50s, and it's no longer operating. This part, these two circles here, that's plant two. Those were went into service in 1968, and the part over on the right, that's plant three. So plant three and plant two are half. So of its capacity, half of it's on plant three, half of it's on plant two. On plant two, some of this stuff here along the roadway is actually part of plant two, including the current headworks. I wanted to point that out because in 1968, the headworks is more or less just a filter to keep stuff out of the plant. That's not supposed to be in there. And what they were designed to filter out in 1968 didn't exist now. So we've gone along to the point that we're handling solid waste through the plant that you say, yeah, of course, but more like sunny solid waste, stuff that should be in a dumpster. So Rhonda, could you go a step over? This is the kind of stuff we're pulling out of it, and that's not what you think would normally be in a sewer plant. That's wipes and different stuff, and it just plugs the whole thing up, and it keeps it from performing at its rated capacity and efficiencies. And obviously, we get monitored out the back end, and we have to meet certain requirements. And this, you can clean this out, and it just plugs right back up because of the filters not doing what it's supposed to. Rhonda, another one, please. This is in the bottom, although you can see on the right, those those tubes are supposed to be open where the air can flow and the plant do what it's supposed to. And it just get, like I said, the only way to get to it is to drain it down and just and clean the stuff out. So what we're proposing now, this is, this is the next part of the original plan we proposed to the council. And when we proposed this to the council, we put rates in then for an anticipated cost, trying to tier it up slowly to prep for it. What happened is in that timeframe, the cost of it went from what we estimated to $5 million more than it was previously cost. So, Rhonda, if you'll go the next slide. So what you see in the blue is the previous stuff we addressed with the rates, and what you'll see in the brown is what we're trying to address now. What we're trying to address now is on the original proposal. Once we started this blue and completed that, we were supposed to, three to five years after that, we were supposed to start working on the lift stations. So what you have now is a proposal that goes to the this phase here that was originally planned and covers this phase for this this money's right there. So once again, this is part of the original proposed project to address the infrastructure. It was the prepare the south wastewater treatment plant piping and do some upgrades was determined to be needed to be done immediately. So was the Phase Four, which is the headworks, which is what we're talking about. That was supposed to be done as soon as possible. And then the three lift stations work was supposed to be done over the next five years, and that's from the time we started this. So I'm just pointing out that this is exactly on schedule with what we originally determined needed to be addressed and when it needed to be addressed. So, Rhonda, if you'll go to the next. This is the monthly. This is gonna look a little different, and the reason it's different is because there's not as many sewer customers as there are water customers. Our three large, our three largest water customers really don't have sewer. You got Refresco that puts water and product. You've got Unilever that has their own wastewater system, doesn't go into ours, and you've got the power plant that has their own discharge permit. So when you take that same money, it's gonna be higher because those people don't use the sewer system. They use the water, they don't use the sewer. So, Rhonda, if you go to the next one, follows the same track. We start here, go to here. It's about, what, $15 difference over four years. At the end of four years, you're $15 a month higher than you started. So, but the the headworks is a major project, major project. The good thing about the headworks is what we, once we build it, hopefully, it will extend the life of our current plant. We're hoping it extends it 15 to 20 years. If you saw the other slide about what's coming in the future, possibly a new plant and how expensive that is, we want to try to make this one last as long as we can. The headworks not only benefits the current plant, but once it's there, if you decide to build a new plant, you would build it in the same location. It would use that same. I I believe if you looked at the other slide and saw the projection from before of what a new plant would cost, I think you can take some of that money out because some of that was the headworks. You know what I mean? And so that would be done. So, what's the next line? Once again, eight, addressing aging infrastructure. This is what, 68, 32, so you're 50, 50 something years old. And like I said, it's just time to address it. I don't, nobody likes what it what it costs, but what I've learned is it doesn't get any cheaper if you wait.
The point proven is, you know, we we try to hold off, you know, rate increases by by, you know, working with the BMU and try to keep the rate increases to a minimum. But when they first brought this up, you know, we were like, eh, let's see what we can do. Now it's $5 million higher than what it was when it originally, everything's gone up. And so if we delay it again, I wouldn't doubt it that if for some reason it did not pass, that in their future, you'd probably be paying another $5 million more than what you're, so I think you should, you know, we should make the move to, you know, pass these rate increases because if you don't, it's just gonna get more expensive if you don't. You have any questions? Anybody having questions, comments? Thanks, Rick. Now we're going to go to the first reading of Bill 6377, Electric Rate Increase. Chair would accept the motion for the first reading.
No move.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? First reading, Tabitha, please.
Bill number 6377, a bill which upon adoption and passage shall become ordinance number 6377, authorizing and establishing electrical charges and rates for the city of Sykes, and whereas the Board of Municipal Utilities has determined that electrical rate increases are necessary and proper to maintain the economic viability of municipal utility system, and whereas the City Council believes an increase in rates is in the overall best interest of the residents of Sykes, and whereas the mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to implement said rate changes. Now therefore, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Sykes, Missouri, as follows. This bill includes sections 1 through 5, all of their parts and subparts, and it's read and introduced first time to council this 5th day of May 2025.
Mr. Landers, you have the floor again.
This is not residential. It's a large commercial, large industrial rates. The easiest way to understand it is go to the right side and look at the top. This rate is for a customer whose peak demand is between 100 and 499 KW. This one is for a customer whose peak is 500 to just shy of 5,000, and five megawatts is 5,000 KW. So this one is for someone whose 5,000 KW are old, over. It really follows the same structure over here with the LGS and the OPS. It's just this flyer in here was originally put in as the economic development rate to try to attract business in Sykes. And I've been here a while. It's been here as long, it's been here 30 years or more. So what happens is, under the current utility structure, you see this on the right, where as you, if you look at the bottom number, this is 5 cents, 4 cents, and 3 and 1/2 cents. Customers, large customers are accustomed to the more power they use, they get a price break because the cost of service actually goes down for the more power. You know, when you have to put a set amount of infrastructure in one place, the more units you run through that set cost, it lowers the per unit cost. So they're used to this. This causes a lot of grief over the haves and have-nots about who gets it. So I, since I've been director, I've had to deal with it three or four times. People say, why don't I get this? And you go, well, what, this was put in as the economic development rate, and it says you only get that rate if you manufacture something. Because it was, they was thinking it would bring jobs in. But some of our largest customers don't manufacture anything. They're warehouses and and different, different facilities like that. So what we're trying to do is standardize our rate structure to what's current in the electric utility industry, and recognize that years ago, when we did this economic development thing, that's, we have different tools in our bag now to address economic development. The city knows that. You have your your chapter 100. We have our other, we have, even the BMU has an economic development incentive rate that we can apply that's separate from this. So this, this part is no longer needed, and all we're trying to do here is is update our rate structure. Rhonda, go to the next slide, please. This is the impacts that it has on the affected customers. The majority of them see a benefit. The the parentheses is their cost goes down. You've got five customers that are negatively impacted. But if you notice, the top customer is also, they're negatively impacted here, and they're positively impacted here, to they, they have two locations. So they have a net positive benefit from the change. So what you're dealing with is four customers right here. And the BMU's proposal is we will And the BMU's proposal is we will phase that change into them over a couple of years. So it's just, to say, do the same thing we're doing with the citizens on some of these other rates, you tier it in. So you don't bring it in all at once. And some of these numbers look pretty big, but if you look at their overall annual utility bill and see what that is, then it's, you know what I mean? It, it sort of gives, puts it in perspective.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you, Rick. Next item up is request to award bid 25-62 HVAC replacements, and that goes to Mr. Lancaster.
Hello, everyone. This is an item that is just part of our routine building maintenance. It is part of the city budget to replace some aging heating and cooling units in four different locations. One within the, one in City Hall, outside this closet. We're getting to a point where the service calls and the being able to maintain these in a, in a proper manner is becoming challenging. As, as many of you know, as, as units get aged, being able to get parts for things get, becomes challenging. So we have, two of these are in City Hall, one is in one of the sports complex concession stands, and one is in the Clinton Building. We put these out for bid publicly. We received two bids locally from both Marty Presley Heating and Cooling and Presley Sales and Services. We included those bids for your information. The low bid was to Marty Presley for $45,700 even. And staff is recommending we award that low bid to Marty Presley's Heating and Cooling. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Marty's also here if I can help in any way.
Any questions or comments for Jay? Now the chair would accept the motion.
I move we award bid 2562 to Marty Presley.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call vote, Rhonda, please.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Thanks, Jay. The next item is award, request to award bid for repaired basketball and tennis court complex. And Josh, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So while discussing something that was more on our radar, crack replacement to pickleball, we came across something. So pickleball replacement, we've moved forward with, and that kind of stayed underneath the budget of having to come in front of council while satisfying purchasing policy. But we uncovered another need, which was tennis. The tennis court is in rough shape. There's some severe cracking in the tennis court and some cracking in the basketball court as well at the complex. So looking at those prices, we brought in a professional to take a look and give us some estimates. Those prices came back and were quite high. So we knew we need to go, take it to bid. So, so we did so. And we received those bids coming back. Let me pull these.
Do they have the summary?
Yes, you guys believe you do have the summary. So the, the low bid and staff is recommending General Acrylics out of Mount Vernon with the bid of $35,445. Just that's what our staff recommending that we award that bid. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Let me ask a question, Josh.
Yes, sir.
I do know that, I think there's a crack that goes from the tennis courts all the way through to the pickleball courts, or there's a big crack down the center court on the pickleball courts. Is that going to be, that's not in this at all, or?
The, the crack that moves in between both? Yes, so that, that will both, that would be repaired. So the, the only difference between the pickleball and tennis, both are getting, all those cracks will be repaired. It's a different style. So pickleball, because it was resurfaced two years ago, the, the pickleball will just be the cracks being repaired itself, but the full surfacing, because it was repaired two years ago, will not be repaired in full surface. Tennis full surface repair was, I think the estimate was, well, really just years and years ago. I think Mar, or Ken said, you know, eight show years ago, which is quite beyond what he would recommend. And so the tennis side will have the full resurfacing, whereas the pickleball side will have just the crack repair.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments?
Do you know what kind of timeframe they can once they start the repair?
Yes, sir. So he, he's in Dexter right now. He actually is working in Dexter and Popper Bluff, and kind of going back and forth there. They should be here, he's hoping, barring weather, maybe in a few weeks, hopefully starting sometime into May to June. And he thinks he'll get it done in a week or so, couple of weeks. Doesn't, doesn't expect to be a long process.
Then once he gets done, the cure?
Good to go.
Good to go?
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Seeing now the chair would accept the motion. Oh, where? I'm sorry? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to figure, like, how long is it expected to last? The pickleball court just got fixed two years ago, and it's already cracking. Like, how long is it expected to last? Because I mean, two years, I wouldn't think that that would, you would have any issues then.
Yeah, well, the, the pickleball, so there, from what I, from what I understand, there's a, there's a resurfacing, and then there's a, there's a crack system. And so the, the court will crack, and you can fix it by crack system, which is significantly cheaper. So that's kind of your yearly maintenance, if you will. And then there's a full resurfacing of it, which is like quadruple the cost. So if you think of it as yearly maintenance on your, on your lawn or laying sod, you lay sod, which would be the surfacing, and then maybe just doing yearly maintenance would be like the crack, crack filling. So like the pickleball, we're just doing the crack filling right now and not doing the full resurface. That's how it's explained to me. I wasn't here for the resurfacing, so, but that's how it's explained to me.
Okay. Because like crack, like the cracks on tennis courts, you don't fill them correctly. Because I mean, I played tennis all my life.
Sure.
If you don't, if you don't fix them, they're, they're still gonna, like yearly, it's gonna go up. So would it be, like, what's the numbers going toward if you go ahead and do the whole thing and fill it completely versus having to do it yearly? Have you, are those numbers out, or did I, did I miss those?
I'm sorry, to the?
Like, are the yearly costs, if you went ahead and did everything that you wanted to do without the, taking out the yearly cost, would that, which one would be more beneficial?
Yeah, so all of the cracks will be filled, so on the pickleball and the tennis side. But the tennis side will just also have the resurfacing over the top coating.
Then yearly, you would have to do what?
Well, it, it just depends on what you see out there. You're just, you're just fixing, you're maintaining what is damaged yearly, just to, to the eye. It could just depend on, probably depend on weathering. I would.
The, the resurfacing of the, of the courts, pickleball courts, the surfacing's great. I mean, the surface is okay. The crack is, is, Peshard was talking about is, is the problem. And if they could just, you know, fill the crack and, and fix it, and understand sometimes that's easier said than done. But that's, that's the issues he's talking about is the, because the surfacing at the pickleball courts is, is still great. And it's been two, two years ago, just the cracking that needs to be fixed.
You mind if I add something, Josh?
Yeah, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, because you guys both heard this, when, when we met with some of these professionals out there, we're talking about the cracks. They explained to us that there is a less expensive one to two year fix for these cracks, and then kind of more of a system that's more of a five year to 10 year. We specked out the five to 10 year system for these cracks with the tennis court, not the, he gave us the option, like, you do this and do it, you know, and, and it'll be back in a year or two. But we can do it with this system and it'll, it'll be, it'll get us more down the road. That's what we specified for the.
So you're looking at five to 10 versus the two?
That was, that was what he told us. Now, he said, I mean, that being said, you know, stuff still happens, but we, we went with the specification with the longer fix.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, because I'm thinking of the, the school tennis team as well, because, I mean, I, I play on those courts, and they're terrible. Like, the cracks, I mean, because, I mean, you hit balls and then, you know, you have bad bounces. It's, it's bad. And then I'm thinking about if they're having tournaments, you know, they use the high school courts, of course, and then they use those two courts that they still have, you know, they need to be, like, fully up to par. And if it costs more, I mean.
Oh, we, we did, we picked the higher, the higher degree. We, we chose the higher degree, Peshard. No, it's, it's a good question. Those were the two options given to us. We chose the, the longer lasting and therefore more expensive option.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing now the chair would accept the motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call vote, Rhonda, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
And Lindsay?
Yes.
Thank you, Josh. Next item is GPS fleet management tracking system. And Carrie, you have the floor.
So we've been looking into getting a fleet vehicle tracking system. We are looking at ones that'll have the forward facing dash cameras. It'll also have the AI that will, that will sense like the hard braking or speeding, all the things that we don't want our drivers doing. So, so we, we talked to Verizon Connect. We looked at doing 91 trackers for, for all of our vehicles, 77 of them having forward facing, forward facing dash cameras, and then five powered GPS trackers for UTVs in the golf court. So the total professional installation is going to be $10,486. We, we hope with your approval that we will get that done within this fiscal year. And then after that, it'll be a monthly cost of about $3,422.34 to continue that management program. The goal is to reduce, reduce accidents by tracking our employees driving. That will hopefully decrease our insurance rates as well as decrease our frivolous lawsuit claims. So, so with your approval, that's what we're asking for.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
So these are just forward facing?
Mm-hmm.
They're not watching the driver?
We looked at doing the drivers. It's an additional cost. We thought we'd start with the forward facing and then maybe move into that at a later time.
How many accidents have we had?
For 2025 so far, we've had five accidents.
And we don't, the, the only way we're going to get a decrease in our insurance is by lowering the number of accidents. We're not going to get a decrease for simply putting these into the cars? We don't get any credit for that?
We can try to negotiate that through our broker. Usually it'll, they'll look at more of the accidents versus having the safety system in place. The other part of that is our workers comp will look at having that too. That, that may help decreasing those rates a little bit as well.
But we don't, we don't know that at this point?
No, it'll have to come through the data as we move forward with the system.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing now the chair would accept the motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Roll call vote, Rhonda, please.
Teachout?
Yes.
Turnbo?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items to be brought before the council tonight? Jay? She, she had her. Want to introduce a new staff person as well?
I do, yes. Go ahead, let her know.
Okay, sorry. I'm Lynn Delil. I live over, over Virginia on Aspen Trace. And Virginia needs to be repaved or scraped off and repaired some way. I have some pictures. Who should I give those to?
That man right over there, yes.
I've lived there since 82, and I don't know, I know in the last 15 years, that has not been taken care of. And I've called, probably a couple of years ago, and talked to someone, and they thought it was going to be in the works. And I emailed before that, but nothing's been done. But the pavement is really, Mr. Drake probably knows, because he used to, he grew up in that area. But it's really uneven. It's inches above. And when you come off Aspen Trace onto Virginia, your car bottoms out, even if you have a sharp angle instead of going straight. If you try to turn, it still bottoms out on your vehicle. Also, there's one picture there that's drainage on Aspen Trace where you have the water going off the street. Years ago, it ate out the soil right there, and the city came and put some more soil back, but it's still, it's still washed out, and it's, you've probably got about a foot deep problem that needs to be fixed. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. JV, oh, I'm sorry.
We got one more.
Go ahead. All right.
My name is Joey Henry. I live over on South Cedar Road 509. And I know people's past there, and they've seen every time we get a hard rain, what it looks like at that corner. It affects my house, it affects 505 South Cedar. I get water in my backyard. I have a shop out back. I'll go out there, I have this much water inside my building. And it's got so bad, it's almost pushed over into my pool. I get water off of Thomas behind me. The water does not push out to that ditch. They dug the roads out a few years ago, did no good. Did any, no good. It's about to fill back in again. But the people who live next to me at 505, they're elderly people. Their, their air conditioning units just about ready to flood away. They did a whole lot of maintenance on that house, remodeling. And I talked to the MoDOT, they says the city's problem. It needs to be fixed. I mean, I, if you pass my house, I take care of my yard. I cut my grass, I do everything I'm supposed to do. My flower beds, I have to go out there and keep putting mulch in my flower beds. So the water goes from the back of my yard all the way out, and it stops at a certain point. It doesn't drain off to the ditch. If you look down at Northwest, the only storm drain on Northwest stops up there by Deok. All the water that comes off those side streets has to funnel down through that way. And it's been going on for years, but it's getting worse, worse, and worse. I'm at the point of almost selling my house and moving because the water's just ridiculous. I spent approximately $3,000. If you pass there and you see a fountain, like a water fountain out there, people was calling because they thought it had a water main. I put a pump out back to pump the water, keep it out of my building. It, it does no good. Because I'm, I'm pumping water from Thomas, all those streets, try to get, trying to keep it out of my building. And out my yard. And out my neighbor's yard. I mean, it's just a little bit of, a little, come through some, they can put some storm drains and do something in there would help out a whole lot. A whole lot.
Joey, what, what was your house number again?
I live at 509 West South Cedar. And those, and my neighbors is 505. We get majority of the water. I live over there by. It's a tarot right there. And I know people's past through there because you can't even get through those roads at times. You had to put barricades up. I said, the last time it stormed out there, it rained, it looked like the Mississippi River. I was out there at 2:00 in the morning looking, was water everywhere. It was even across the street. Went back out to about 3:30, majority of across the road had disappeared. Myself and my neighbor, we still had water. I said, those people that stay at 505, they had. I said, those people upstate of five oh five, they had water in their garage. I mean, it's.
Hey, is, is the flood things that you're doing currently, is that going to help alleviate any of that? Okay. Because we are, I mean, we are actively, the flood happens before we get the drainage pipe. We're building a reservoir to where, over by the, the power plant, to where it can hold water, because the problem is it can't all get out. And so it backs up, and then it, because it can't get, like, you know, St. John's Ditch and things like that, it just can't get in there because it, there's too much water in the ditch. Jay has been, got several different projects going on. There's a lot of trenches dug and everything else. And right now, of course, the flood happened before Jay got through, so we can't see the effects of the things that he was doing. But part of it was, I know where you live, you're part of the sheriff's department, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Because I live in Westview, so I'll go by your house every day. And so Jay, if you don't mind, would you mind getting with him after, and let's see if, how we can help?
Okay. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the Jay Lancaster.
I just wanted to introduce to council and our newest staff member. This is Mr. Gage McMullin. Gage comes to us previously working for the city of Cape Airport, but he is our new airport manager for Sykesville Airport. We're excited to have him. Comes with some great education and great experience, and just wanted to let him get to meet all of you guys, let you grill him if you want to real quick or anything. But anyway, we're really excited to have Gage, so, thank you.
Welcome aboard, Gage. Are there any other items to be brought before the council tonight? Scene nine, the chair would accept the motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now adjourned in executive session.